Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Welcome to the October 26th meeting of the Bloomfield Hills Board of Education. Madam Secretary, can you take attendance, please?
Yes, all board members are present.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we've got a great fall going for the school district and kids have been active and Rob's got some progress to report on some of the great success that our students have been having in our, in the athletic fields. And I'm grateful that you all are here and have your children with us in Bloomfield Hills Schools. And with us. Dr. Glass.
All righty. Well, as, it's no surprise to anyone that we had a little water situation this week. We and about 270,000 other people, a lot of people really were affected. I want to just take a moment to acknowledge that this was a significant event, that it was different than anything we've seen in a long time. And I want to thank and acknowledge so many of our team members and our community members who really made this amazing job, making sure that we could accurately assess what had happened and take appropriate precautions that enabled our students to come right back to school after only one day of interruption. So shout out, huge shout out, and I know I'm going to miss some people, but I just have to rattle down the list of so many people who sprang into action. First and foremost, Brian Goby and the Physical Plant Services Team, they hauled in tens of thousands, how many bottles of water, Brian? 25,000? 25,000 bottles of water and those five gallon water cooler jugs, how many of those, Brian? Eighty of those, plus the dispensers. And they were delivering these just in time demand all day long across every one of our facilities to make sure that all of our students had the water they needed and took all the precautions with all of our sinks and faucets and fountains to cover them up. It was remarkable. I also want to thank our food service director, Mary Ann Romsec, who had to leap into special protocols to ensure that we could serve food because, I don't know if you're aware, you know, folks at home, I know our board is aware that we serve, we prepare all of our food essentially at the high school and it, then, you know, take it to our sites. So when the high school loses the ability to have the right kind of water, it affects the whole district. I want to thank our transportation department for being flexible. I want to thank our secretaries who were fielding all kinds of questions and having to create systems to, you know, make sure the water got distributed and was replenished and answered a lot of questions from people. I want to thank our communications team, Shira Good particularly, who made, had really up-to-date information on the website, chronicled and time-stamped. And it was really the go-to place for people to get information. We received a lot of positive feedback about the notification and communication. I have to, you know, thank our teachers and our students for their patience, our administrators, because in the buildings, there was a lot to manage around this. And our families for their patience, you know, we're never going to make all the right calls when something like this happens. All we can do is make the best decisions with the information at hand and we have to do it sometimes in a very compressed timeline. But I want to thank our parents for being understanding and patient and very kind to us during this, this time. And really want to thank our municipal leaders, too. They did an amazing job making sure we had information we needed about the state of the, you know, the repairs, what we could expect with our water pressures, which were fluctuating significantly all the time. And our municipal leaders were really great, all of them that we work with. And I also want to thank our state and county agencies. They did a really good job getting information out and I want to thank my superintendent colleagues and neighbors nearby affected because we ended up exchanging a lot of critical information. You know, I think one of the things I just want our families to understand is there's always a lot more to these kind of things than meet the eye. You know, one of the things we dealt with was that some of our schools, we weren't sure that they had been affected at all, but we couldn't be sure that they had or hadn't been. Because just because they didn't seem to lose pressure didn't necessarily mean that they weren't cross-contaminated or the water didn't have some bacteria there. And so I did get some questions about, you know, were we able to keep some buildings open? Did we have to shut the whole district down? But when you think about the food service and you think about the transportation and you think about the number of those kind of factors, you start to realize we're an interconnected ecosystem and when something happens to a significant portion of the district, it affects the whole district. But I think people understood that and really gave us the benefit of the doubt in keeping that in mind. So again, thank you. We only lost one day instead of, we could have lost the entire week. And for those of you at home, know that the Boil Water Advisory is still in effect through this week and at least, and you should really check our website. We've given out good information on that and you can also check your municipality's website. Oh, sure. Our equity and inclusion work really is continuing in full strength. This is something we've been at for three years now. And over the last few weeks, just to mention a few of the trainings that have taken place in this room and in this facility, we've had our Master Global Champions training. Some of our board members have participated in that. We've had our Restorative Practices training, repeating again. We've had Student Voice training, it was just phenomenal, what our high school students were doing in receiving this training in order to share global competencies with our fifth graders eventually. And Restorative Practices training, I already mentioned that, our Student Voice training and then our Athletic Coaches also received training. So we've had just all kinds of training going on the last couple of weeks. Manura Mabusi's done a really nice job with that. We're very grateful for her service and she's really helped make this training consistent. And what I'm excited about is it can be systemic. It can continue, it can be sustainable. Because she's training other leaders and facilitators who can carry this work on. We had our DARE meeting, Diversity, Academic Equity and Race Relations meeting, that is our community meeting that deals with issues around inclusion, equity, closing the achievement gap, cultural competency, all of those things. That meeting was kicked off this week. We had really good attendance. We had some really lively discussion. We shared a lot of data and we talked about the specific strategies that we are putting in place. Todd really talked about our strategic plans and things that we're doing instructionally, our focus areas that are, and how those are aimed at helping all students achieve and specifically how they work toward closing those gaps, what the, what the intent and the design of that work is. So I'm excited about, I was very excited to hear that and I think it really helped our attendees. So we have another DARE meeting, they're monthly generally, and we've laid out the whole year's calendar with lots of great topics. And I think there's, there's some, you know, restructuring and reframing after we've been at this a while now, it's time to do some things a little differently. And our next meeting is November 23rd at 6:30, right here. And so if you'd write that on your calendar, we'd love to see you there. That would be wonderful. Congratulations to our, our athletic teams, 21st? Thank you.
Thanksgiving Day.
Oh, well, yeah, that's not the worst. See, I'm just like focused on Thanksgiving already. It's terrible. Thank you. November 21st. Do not come here on Thanksgiving. I will not be here.
We'll be closed.
Our football team, we're so excited about our athletic programs. Our football team has made the playoffs. Congratulations to them. Our boys tennis team, Division One State Champions, unbelievable. Our girls golf team finished seventh in the state. We've just got some great student athletes, some, some great coaches, great athletic staff, great booster parents, you know, it's a great athletic community and what a neat thing for our kids to be able to have that kind of a program available to them. It can be really life-changing. And I just want to share, as I'm kind of winding this up, an experience I had that I really didn't see coming. You know those nice surprises in life that come your way? Our Chinese club, a student from the Chinese club about a month ago invited me to an event in which the Chinese club was going to be welcoming our Taiwanese students from our sister school in Taiwan, in Taiwan. And I think there were about a dozen or 13 of the students who were invited to come. And it was going to be in the high school commons. And I expected, you know, some ceremony, some cake and punch and, you know, just some meet and greet and a few announcements and maybe a little ceremony. And that's not what I got. I walked into a full-fledged celebration of learning, of, of talent, of, of unity, of, of just having a great time. It was a little bit dance party, it was a little bit zumba, it was a little bit rock show, a little bit marching band and sessionals and a little bit karaoke. It was, and it was all organized by the students. And so, you know, I walk in and there's all these students are gathering and I don't think students who were just there. They just didn't go home. It was like 2:30 and everybody's, a lot of students are leaving, but a whole bunch of them stayed. And then one of our teachers, who's a zumba instructor, gets up on the grand staircase halfway up and starts doing zumba and they start, you know, everybody's just doing it, you know? So this was really, I think, to show the time when these students kind of, a little slice of our American experience, right? And it just went on and on. Our marching band came in, our drum line came in, our pom squad came in. And people just stayed and they ate and they talked and they, and they clapped and they cheered. And then, you know, a young man gets out his electric guitar and he just starts, you know, banging out some AC/DC, you know? It was, it was really cool. And so I just thought to myself, this is, this is our secret sauce. This is something special that our students, you know, have the ability to make that happen, not that they have the ability, but they also have the freedom and they have the wherewithal and they, they think deeply about these things and they think, what's going to make a great experience for a student from another country to experience a little bit about who we are? And, oh, by the way, I'll invite the superintendent. And, oh, you know, this is amazing, really. I didn't want to go home. I took video and I just thought, you know, this is a great day. This is a great day for a kid in an American comprehensive high school. This is a great day in Bloomfield Hills and a lot of this stuff goes on, you know, and I don't, I don't get to see it, you know, things that are wonderful that go on, but this is one I walked right into the middle of and thought, this was different and this was cool. And I think it's an expression of the culture that we created our school, where we really honor the whole person, the whole experience, you know? We're, we're high expectations with our academics, yes. You know, we are serious about, about our learning and making sure that we have our, our fundamentals under our belts and, and we can be a pretty darn competitive group and, you know, we're high achievers and all that stuff, but that's not where it ends. That's not where it ends for us. And I was just so excited. And I, and I want to thank our, our teacher sponsor, you know, for putting that together, for empowering our students. And she walked up to me and she said, Mrs. Lee, she walked up to me, she said, "These are our cornerstones, ownership. This is coming to life." And, and what I loved is seeing that connection. It was just really wonderful. So, didn't mean to go on so long about that, but it was awesome. It was really great. Lastly, I want to mention our BHS Foundation because since we've restarted the foundation in 2014 with this board's support, the foundation, through our generous donors in our community, has raised half million dollars and has given 125 educator grants and awarded them within our school system. And the goal is that every educator, you know, every program leader within our school system who's got an idea, a need, an inspiration, a passion, whether it's big, whether it's small, has the funds or the opportunity to receive the funds to see that idea and make it happen and to be able to implement those ideas. And that's what our foundation, you know, has been focused on, continues to do an outstanding job. Those mini-grants are available now through October 21st, not the 23rd, not, not November 23rd, through October 21st, excuse me, and the...
Early in, right?
Through, yeah, I think it might be no, yeah, they're probably still taking them, but it was right about now, we're about, we're about done. I could have written the wrong date down again. I was scrambling here. The annual donation appeal, though, is the thing that I really want to highlight because these grants don't happen by themselves. The funds that fund these grants really are through the generous donations of our community members, our faculty members. And so these will be collected November and December of this year. So you're going to see a campaign. The campaign is going to be asking for one-time or ongoing contributions and inviting those for this, for the foundation, which funds the next cycle of mini-grants. So just wanted to make you aware of that, that these grants have been wonderful and we would really appreciate any support you would consider giving. Anyone who's listening, that would be wonderful to, to help, to help our foundation achieve its goals. And this year's theme is "This Is Us." Hashtag "This Is Us." So I will leave my report there. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So the next item on our agenda is a special recognition and I'd like to ask our Assistant Superintendent for Finance, Tina Coste, to come forward. And while she's coming forward to do that, I actually want to mention that I also saw in the paper that our Transportation Department was given an award up at Oakland Schools for the perfect bus inspection. So thank you to, to all of the folks in our Transportation Department for making that happen again.
Yes, very good point. Something we're all very proud of. So this is actually the 17th consecutive year, I am happy to say, that we've received the Association of School Business Officials International Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting Award. And that is for having met or exceeded the program's high standards for financial reporting and accountability. And this is, as I said, our 17th year. So we started this back in 2000, 2001. It takes a while for them to go through all of the rigorous checks and balances that they have to do to review. So this is for the fiscal year ended 2016. And later on this evening, we'll hear our audit report for the year just ended in '17. This particular award represents a very significant achievement and reflects our commitment to the highest standards of school system financial reporting. It takes hard work and dedication from many Bloomfield Hills school staff to compile this financial report. And it's in accordance with ASBO strict reporting standards. But it primarily involves our Business Services Team members. And most of the team is here tonight and I'd like to acknowledge everyone that is here. We have Barb and Sally Shawana. And also I know that Aurel is working on his masters and he wasn't able to be here. And then Karen is, has been out ill, so unfortunately she can't be here either. Otherwise, usually I hand this award over to her. So we're very appreciative of everyone's efforts. And then also I have to say that the entire hallway I'm in with the HR Payroll Department is important, too. Payroll is our largest cost and those numbers must be accurate as well in order to have these kinds of results. So thank you to everyone. And I promised them I wouldn't ask them to come up here, so they're just waving. And this is the award that we received. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you to all your team. We really appreciate all the things. And it's a wonderful statement to be able to share with our community that we are recognized by outside groups as well for, for the work that's being done. So thank you so much. Would that like to move on to our consent agenda? Jackie, please.
Thank you. I move that the Board of Education approve the recommendations detailed in the consent agenda as follows. Request to approve minutes, regular meeting of October 5th, 2017. Request to approve bid number 1702, demolition of former administration building located at 4175 Andover Road. Request to approve bid number 1017, asbestos abatement project at 4175 Andover Road. Request to approve heating system repair in the amount of $35,097.58. Request to approve dispersment reports. Request to approve annual summer tax resolution. Request to approve HR actions.
Second?
Support.
Support from Paul. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. All right. Moving on to our special reports. We have several reports and the first is going to be our annual financial audit presentation. And we, we will be hearing from Laura Clayes and David Boss and Katie, maybe not, from Plant Moran. Thank you so much.
Good evening. We're very pleased to be here this evening to present your audit report for the year ended June 30, 2017. Included in the board packet, you received a copy of your comprehensive annual financial report, the federal awards audit, as well as a letter to the Board of Education with informational items for your review. Our job here today with David Boss joining me is to share the financial highlights, primarily focused on the general fund for the year ended June 30, 2017. We also wanted to congratulate the Board of Education as well as the administration on the receipt of that ASBO Certificate of Excellence. As Tina mentioned, that is reviewed very vigorously, but it is reviewed by people outside the state of Michigan. So there are very few districts in the state that receive that award, so congratulations to all of you on the receipt of that information. We're also pleased to report that when we did your federal program audit, you had no findings and no question costs. So that's what you're looking for as a board member and as a community member, and that means the testing that we did on your federal programs, there was nothing out of alignment with the federal regulations. And as I'm sure you're aware, those become more complicated each and every year, so congratulations on that as well. With that, we'll turn your attention to the slide deck that we distributed to you this evening and that you'll see on the screen with some of the financial highlights.
Thank you. So as Laura mentioned, my name is David Boss and I'm here to present the audited financial results of the 1617 school year. We'll start by taking a look at the revenues or the money that came in to the general fund during the school year. As you can see here, the total revenues represented or recorded by the general fund totaled 88.5 million. Now, half of that amount was collected from state revenues. State revenues include the state's portion of the foundation allowance, certain categorical revenues, as well as $6.4 million in retirement pass-through funding that's received from the state but then has to get directly remitted back to the state as an expenditure within a month. Other significant components of revenue include local revenue of 38 million, or about 43 percent. That represents the other portion of the foundation allowance, which is primarily property tax collections. The remaining amounts are inter-district revenues of $4 million, which is Act 18 receipts from Oakland County, as well as federal revenues of $1.9 million, which is primarily special education funding from the federal government. So now that we've talked about the revenues that came into the district, we can also talk about the expenditures of the general fund. So as you can see on this slide, the total expenditures reported on a functional level were $86.3 million, the vast majority of which related to instruction and instructional support. Another way to look at revenue or expenditures is also from the object level, which you'll see on this next slide. So this takes that same $86.3 million in expenditures and breaks it out based on the actual source of the payment. So if you combine the salaries and benefits experienced by the district over the last year, over 84 percent of the expenditures related to employee-related costs. So said differently, for every dollar that went out of the district, 84 cents of each dollar related directly to employee-related salaries and benefits. Now, it should be noted that included in the benefits number is also that $6.4 million in retirement pass-throughs that we discussed on the revenue side. It's like we said, that comes indirectly from the state and then goes directly back. So the overall difference between the revenues and the expenditures recorded during the year results in your change in fund balance. And as you can see on this slide, the current year increase in fund balance was $2.3 million, resulting in an ending fund balance of $20.8 million. This fund balance is broken out into three primary components, the first of which is non-spendable, so these are amounts that were already prepaid or inventoried costs as of year end. The next grouping is assigned fund balance, which would be the budgeted use of fund balance in the 1718 school year. And the remainder is unassigned, of $20.7 million. And this is on hand for any unexpected changes in either revenues coming in or expenditures that arise during the school year. So now that we've talked about the actual activity that occurred during 1617, we did want to draw attention to one of the biggest issues that all school districts across the state are facing, which is retirement funding. So as you can see on this slide, it's over the last 10 years, the overall contributions the district has been required to make have risen dramatically. And this includes both from a gross perspective, which includes that $6.4 million in pass-through funding, as well as from a net perspective, which is truly the district's own funding that goes towards this retirement plan. What's important to note is that the district isn't the only one that has to pay into this plan, but also the district's employees also have to remit a portion of their pay to help address the overall statewide pension shortfall. So with that, I'm actually going to turn it back over to Laura for a couple of closing comments.
Thank you, David. So in conclusion, the district continues to operate very well and you're very financially sound. And that comes with a lot of hard work and effort at the board level, also with the administration, and certainly the support from the staff and the community. So we congratulate you on all of that hard work. We did also want to draw attention to, we talked about this last year, so you went through pretty large system conversion, which really affects a lot of the financial reporting as well as all the reporting within the district. That is fully complete now, it's up and running, and we just want to congratulate the team because you are really looked at as best-in-class in your utilization of that system. And when we work in other districts, they're asking us questions, what should we do, who should we talk to? And we continually send them to your team because they've got great ideas and have figured out how to use that system efficiently. And that really does end up helping everyone, so we really appreciate their leadership there and wanted to make sure that you were aware of that. And then also that financial soundness, that comes with the fact that as a group, you've always taken a long-term view of what's the right thing for the student base. And sometimes that means you have to make tough short-term decisions, but it has put the district in a really nice position to be able to provide benefits for the community and for the students for the long term. So we appreciate the, the view that you've taken and would certainly encourage you to continue to do that. And again, we just want to thank everyone at the district for all the support they provided to us during the audit, but really the support that they provide to all of you in presenting a top-notch educational experience for the students because obviously that's why everyone is here. So with that, we thank you for letting us be here. We're happy to take any questions on the packet of information you received or our slides today.
Judge Ford.
Yes. Thank you for kind of setting up the discussion on MIPSers and everything like that. I'm not a financial expert like Plant and Moran, but what I'm seeing is kind of flattening out as we're coming into 2017. Is that an aberration? Where are we going from here? Are we starting to level off? What are you telling your other clients to expect relative to this?
So as you may recall, as David mentioned, employees are paying into the system as well, and they've continued to offer within the retirement system, a number of different plans that people enter into with the attempt to try and shore up this underfunding of the system. So when we get the projections as to where the retirement system is, right now statewide, it's underfunded just over $20 billion. And they're looking at the support that the state has to provide, as well as the districts will continue to provide, and that is going to continue at approximately the level that you see at the 1617 range, probably for the next, I'll say, five to 10 years. So it is starting to level out and they do put projections forth that show that it will be in a much better financial spot, but it isn't going to be overnight. And the thing that matters most and that we have to watch is how are the investments performing at the state level? Because that drives what that contribution percentage has to be. So the market's doing quite well right now, but they're trying to balance risk and the returns because they are monitoring that rate quite closely and the state is paying an amount as well. So it's probably flattening out a bit, but it's not going to drop off. It'll stay at that level for quite some time.
Okay. I did want to mention that Laura did come to our FFLA meeting in September and walk us through in much more detail a lot of the, the financial information. The board had, the board members at FFLA did have an opportunity to have more conversation about it at that time. And then also David did call me this summer to ask if I had any particular concerns and to sort of to check and to give the board's perspective. So just to, you know, just so everybody could understand that it's more than just, the board has gotten more information and engagement than this brief presentation compared to all the rest of the information that they have shared with us. Other board questions or comments? Other board questions or comments?
No, just a comment. Being someone who's in the industry, again, I don't think Tina was at the last, Tina or her team were at the last board meeting. But again, to get some of these accolades and awards, I, you know, I know that Tina and her team do a significant amount of work way above and beyond what they should be doing to help secure the financial success of the district. So I just wanted to, you know, give accolades to her and her team.
Thank you so much. Really appreciate all you do for us.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, we are going to have a week's report coming from Wendy Osterman, who's going to talk with us about our M-Steps results for this year. I don't know, Todd or Rob wants to say anything to set it up? Okay, Todd, come on up and tell us what, give us a framework here.
Yes, good evening. Tonight, we're going to be going over some M-Step and SAT data. And really what we're taking a look at is, in terms of the presentation, is more of a high-level look. But yet, we also have it broken down into student groups as well. So, but what I really wanted to highlight, and I didn't want it to go unmentioned tonight, is the work kind of behind the scenes with this type of data as it comes in. And Wendy and Learning Services, largely with Wendy being able to facilitate individual team data meetings at each building site to be able to give them an opportunity to really reflect on this data, be able to look for trends, be able to strategize, and to really have a deep understanding of it. At the same time, Wendy and I both want to make sure that there's a little bit of an understanding between state assessment data and also diagnostic data in terms of what we use that for. So this data, as it comes to us from the state, is already old when it arrives. So our students are not in the grade level that they were in at the time that they took this assessment. They have different teachers now, they have a different schedule. So it's still very useful data to us. But as we kind of move forward and Wendy really helps us build a data-rich culture that embraces the idea of using data to inform instruction, there really is a balance behind this. And a lot of that diagnostic assessment data is still being collected at this time of the year. And so one of the preparations, of course, we have our district data dig coming up in terms of being able to use that data as well. So today is really just looking at one side of that story, but I didn't want that to go unmentioned, that there's a whole nother subset of data that we use to really inform our practice. And, but some of that data is still being collected. So at some point after the district data dig, we'll be able to come back and kind of give you a summary of how that conversation was constructed and also different data points that we were able to use to build those conversations. So with that, I'll go ahead and let Wendy present. Yes.
Could you just explain a little bit what a data dig is?
Yes. And in fact, at an upcoming BIC meeting, we're going to be going over that as well in terms of looking at what that's going to entail. So what that day will look like is we'll be inviting teams from each building, and they'll have the opportunity to go through some of that diagnostic and state assessment data, so it won't just be all in one area. And we'll be able to allow them opportunities to look for trends, be able to strategize. It'll be a launching off of school improvement processes as well. And we're also inviting DARE to that, to meeting as well. They're going to have a forty-five to one-hour segment of that. We'll be asking really engaging questions. And DARE's already been able to, a couple representatives from DARE have already met with Wendy, and they've been strategizing regarding some of the questions and those thought-provoking questions that will be asked at that time. But it's really going to be a construct that really embraces that type of data culture that we're trying to build. And I know the feedback that Wendy and I have been getting from the building principals is there's a lot of excitement around that, being able to come together and being able to, being given the time and space to have that type of conversation and be able to go through information to that level of detail and having the opportunity to be that analytical behind some of this information. So there will be a whole construct for that day. Will be a mixture of data digs, as well as taking a look at best practice. And it will kind of maneuver in and out of those conversations as we go through that day. And so at one of our upcoming BIC meetings, when we have that completely mapped out, we'll be presenting that. And then we'll also plan on coming back to a board meeting to present a summary of that day to kind of let you know what happened and the outcomes for it.
Thank you.
Okay.
Wendy?
Thank you. Have to pull up my presentation, but thank you so much for joining me this evening and looking at some data.
Thank you.
What's that? This one, right? It's hard, no, it's hard to see on here. Oh, thank you. Yeah.
And then you go from the beginning.
Thanks. Okay, so just like Ted said, I'm just going to go over some of the data. This is from spring of 2017, M-Step data and MME data. So on this slide, I just want to highlight some of the changes. There were a lot of things that were the same from 2016 to 2017. In terms of the length of the test, there were no changes. So in 2016, there were some changes, but in 2017, there were not any changes to the length of the test. Recall that in 2016, there was a reduction in the length. And what did change is that the windows for testing changed. So it used to be that grades three and six had a separate three-week window compared to grades four and seven. And in 2017, the state combined all four of those grades into a four-week window. Grades five, eight, and eleven expanded to be a four-week window. So we looked, we were looking at four-week windows compared to three-week windows. So we'll first look at BHS data by subject and grade for 2017, followed by trends for 2015, 2016, and 2017. We'll look at some county comparisons and some state comparisons. So this slide, it really answers the question, what percent of our students scored proficient or advanced on the spring 2017 M-Step? And this is a summary slide, and it's just for us at Bloomfield Hills Schools and just for spring of 2017. But as we look at this, it really only kind of tells us part of the story. It's helpful to have other comparisons in there so that we can see how we compare. So this next slide, what this shows us is I've added in Oakland County and the state of Michigan. So Bloomfield Hills Schools is the blue, and the red is Oakland County, and the green is Michigan. So you can see that Bloomfield Hills Schools has a higher proficiency percentage in all of the grades, in all of the subjects, compared to both the county and the state with all areas. With some of the grades and subjects significantly higher than the county and the state. So if you look at seventh-grade math, for instance, there's a pretty significant difference between where we are in Bloomfield Hills compared to the county and the state.
Wendy?
Yes.
Is there a disconnect with, you know, across, obviously, Bloomfield, Oakland, and Michigan in science on what's, you know, their testing and what, across the state, they're learning? You know, just looking at the scores, is it, you know, I mean, it seems like a whole disconnect. Not just us, just across the county and the state.
Right. So a lot of questions do come up, both about science and social studies, because you start to see that those percent proficiencies are, you know, very low, even in districts that are doing really well comparatively speaking. So naturally, as educators, what we would do is if we saw some, a percentage like that, we would go to the test, and we would say, is the test really assessing what we are wanting it to assess? Unfortunately, we don't have that luxury. We can't look at the test. There are a lot of changes happening within science and social studies both. The Common Core has been in effect with English Language Arts and Mathematics. So that could be part of the play that's happening there. The science is changing a lot, the test, and we don't know how that's going to, you know, what, what kind of an impact we're going to see on those changes. But we have the same questions as educators, which is why this is one of many multiple data points. And then we look, obviously, at the data points that we have within our school system as well. So this next chart, what this shows is the trend data. And we're looking at 2014, 15, 2015, 16, and 2016, 17. So the spring 15, 16, and 17 M-Steps. And here you have Bloomfield Hills Schools compared to Oakland County Schools. And the yellow is the Oakland County. And so you can start to see some of the trends. Again, this is the county, though. So I'm going to go to the next slide because the next slide has the same exact information plus the state. So it just adds a little another layer. So here, we can start to see what the trends are. And what you'll notice is that the state and county trends are fairly consistent. If you compare the state and county trends, BHS doesn't always follow those same trends. For instance, if you look at third-grade ELA, that's the one that's all the way on the left-hand side, you'll see that both the county and the state had a decline over the last three years. But if you look at Bloomfield Hills, from 2016 to 2017, we actually showed an increase. So that's pretty significant when we see an overall decrease at the county and the state level, but yet in our district, we see an increase. That's something that is to celebrate. I don't want to go too fast. So this next slide is for Bloomfield Hills Schools MME testing. So the MME test is what's given to eleventh graders, and it's composed of three parts, the SAT, the work keys, and the M-Step. So here, the top graph compared the state and the county and the district for 2017. And we are the green, and the state is the blue, and the county is the red. And the bottom graph looks at 2016 versus 2017. And the reason why I wanted to highlight 2016 versus 2017 is because it wasn't that long ago, I think it was in the spring, that I was presenting 2016 data, and there were some concerns with eleventh-grade science and social studies. And we have seen a huge increase in both of those areas. And you'll see on some upcoming slides where we are in comparison with the county and the state as well. So that's something, again, to really celebrate because the staff at Bloomfield Hills High School has worked very hard, and they took those results very seriously.
Was it surprising to you as you were analyzing?
Speak to the mic.
I'm sorry. Thank you, Howard. Was it surprising to you, as you were looking at the other slide where we were overlaying, you know, how the county and the state are doing relative to us? And in fact, if you can go back one more slide, I believe it was just one more. Yet, nope, back when we were talking about social studies?
This one?
Oop, I think I just saw it. There was a, off on the right-hand side, it seemed like social studies, yeah, and science were kind of floundering here. So here, you know, as we're looking at M-Step, it seems like we're really struggling here on the social studies side. And yet, when you look at M-Step and stuff like that, actually, it's not looking so bad. Is that, is that surprising, or am I not reading this correctly? Right.
Right.
And you're comparing M-Step to MME.
So the MME, what we were comparing with MME is still the M-Step, though. So MME is M-Step, and that's for science and social studies. And then it's the SAT for language arts and mathematics. So it's still M-Step. What's surprising to me as I look at this is that when you look at these scores, when we're looking at grades three through eight, or here, four, seven, and five, eight, and then looking at eleventh grade, such a significant difference. That's, that's what's the surprising part. Yeah, because then if you look at that slide, those are significantly higher.
You know, I'm glad to see that, you know, I just, fifty percent proficiency, you know, even when we compare ourselves to the state, it's just, I don't know, it's nothing to celebrate. You know, it's, that's why we're doing what we're doing tonight and all the work that you guys are doing is, what can we do to make, help our students become more proficient if we all agree that this is an effective way of measuring proficiency? If not, then let's worry about how we measure it to make sure that we're happy with how it's going.
Right. So those are some of the conversations that I've had when I met with all of the individual schools' data teams and some of the questions that we have because, you know, obviously, we're all in this for a reason, and we all want to do what's best for our students. And so if this is something that we're questioning, what other evidence do we have? And so we want to definitely look at multiple indicators.
Yeah. With an end goal of, you know, making sure that we're enabling our students to be architects of their own future, what is this really telling us? And if this isn't giving us the data that we need to help us steer our learners in that direction, then maybe we got to come up with our own data collection.
The, I think it was two years ago that the State Board of Education approved the new generation science standards, NGSS. All the schools in the state are teaching now to NGSS. But I think I'm right that the M-Step test itself is still the old test and won't be adapted to the NGSS standards until, I think, 2019 or 2020?
It's in a transitioning phase right now.
So that, there's a, currently, there's a mismatch between, well, the, we all went to Common Core a few years ago, and the science and the social studies a number of years ago were lagging.
Okay.
The State Board approved NGSS, and we still have not approved a new social studies standards. Should be sometime this year. The standards, you know, were all back from ten years ago or so. NGSS has been adopted, but the, the actual test is still not aligned. So that's another reason why some of these scores are so poor.
Maybe. We don't know for sure.
Yeah.
Okay.
So this next slide shows eleventh grade, again, the M-Step that, that is part of MME for spring 2015, 2016, and 2017 for Bloomfield Hills, Oakland County, and the state. So it has the same data, but I've added the three-year trend there. Again, just, you know, pointing out that, that huge jump from last year.
Wasn't it last year, though, we had the issue with our online?
The technology, yeah.
Technology.
In 2016?
Yeah.
Yes.
Because we opted to go forward while other districts might not have.
That's right.
Go forward, and so it's almost...
Right. So we, that could have played a factor as well.
Because if you take the other, the other trends, then it does seem like an anomaly.
We did not have any technological problems, I don't think, in 2017.
In 2017, we had very few.
Yeah. So 16 could be an outlier, right?
Correct. So the new SAT test, basically, it happened in 2016. That was the first time that it was part of the MME, and it was the first time that we saw the new restructured SAT. So we're looking at two years of data here. And this slide basically is showing those two years of data. That's only two years that we have available for Bloomfield Hills. And this, I just want to make sure that it's clear that although it's the SAT, this is the SAT that is administered in the spring as part of the MME. I realize that students sometimes elect to take it more than one time. This is specifically that SAT test that's part of the MME.
So Wendy, knowing what the SAT represents, so when we say eighty-four percent or whatever, what does that, what does that mean? Proficient at the SAT?
Yes. So the state has come up with what they consider to be proficient, and this is based on their formula.
So it's a certain score, or they say anything about that as proficient?
Yes. Yes. So if you look at where we are, we're the blue, and Oakland County is the red, and Michigan is the green. So with the ELA, the language arts for eleventh grade for the SAT, in fifteen, sixteen, or basically, spring of 2016, we had seventy-nine percent. And then in spring of 2017, eighty-four percent. So a jump there. And then with math, sixty-one percent proficiency in 2016 to sixty-seven percent proficiency in 2017.
Do you happen to know what those scores are? I'm just curious.
What the cutoff score is?
What the score is to define proficient at the SAT?
Not off the top of my head, no.
I guess I'm interested in some, probably, the majority of our students apply to University of Michigan and Michigan State. And so it'd be interesting for me to know, you know, what is the percentage of the students that actually were accepted for those last two years, to be able to align that.
But we also know that our students more often are valuing the ACT score and putting more effort into the ACT than necessarily than they are into the SAT. They may not put the same effort into...
So...
Didn't it flip to SAT last year?
So in two thousand, in spring of 2016 was the first time that MME had the SAT as part of it, but that doesn't mean that students didn't take the ACT. So that's what you're referring to, right, Cynthia? So basically, students could still take the ACT as many times as they wanted, and they could use that to apply for college. They didn't have to use the SAT. They don't, they don't have to use it. They can use the ACT. They can report that. It's their choice.
Can, is there an obvious, to you, explanation for why the state and the county were amazingly flat, you know, from one data point to the next? They just, within one point of each other. And yet, we, you know, bumped up, in this case, with the ELA, we bumped up five points, and the other one, we bumped up six. Is there anything that you can be, that you are aware of that could explain that, or...
Well, I think that it's, I think that we can equate that to the excellent things that are happening at the high school, and the fact that, you know, they're constantly trying to meet the needs of all of their students. I don't think that they're trying to necessarily improve their test scores as much as they're just trying to meet the needs of all of those students.
And I think that the high school is also trying to convey to our students that whether or not they put a high value on how they do on this particular test, that it does reflect on our school district, and it's important that they put some effort into it. So I think it's a continuing project to, project to help the students put that level of emphasis and value in it.
Exactly. There was a lot of intentional messaging surrounding that last year with all of the MME testing.
And isn't Bloomfield's scores included in the state and the county?
Yes.
So technically, the state and the county actually did worse.
Right.
And we brought them up to where they are.
That's a very good point. But still, but still.
Still.
We're doing our part.
Good point. So this next slide, what's interesting about this one is that it has a breakdown for the SAT test, again, the SAT test that is part of the MME. And this is for English Language Arts. And the red is from spring 2017, and the blue diamonds are for spring of 2016. So you can see where the districts were at. And this is every district in Oakland County, and basically where we are. So you can see that Bloomfield Hills proficiency is second in the county with Novi. We're tied, actually, with Novi at eighty-four percent, and the highest is eighty-eight percent. So, you know, we're right there. We're very close. It's tremendous. And you can see, you can see right on there the growth that we had as well. Again, something to really celebrate. And then the next slide is similar. This is for the math part of the SAT. So as we look at this one, Bloomfield Hills jumped from, again, sixty-one percent to sixty-seven percent from spring 2016 to spring 2017. The highest percent proficiency was Novi at seventy-one percent. And, you know, just note that the top five, although you can't see the percentages, the top five are between sixty-seven percent and seventy-one percent, with the sixth highest at fifty-seven percent. So there's a big jump there. So being, we are right there among those top schools, and then there's a jump. Again, very impressive. These are some of my favorite graphs. I like these graphs.
I'm so happy for our students and their families. My heart just bleeds for the districts that are not doing well, for the children in those districts.
And so happy for all of the teachers that put in hard work every single day.
Yes, absolutely. Job well done.
So in summary, multiple measures are used to measure student achievement. We have to keep in mind that M-stop is only one measure. We're using daily measures with the interactions and the products and all of the assessments that we give to our students. Compared to county and state performance, the M-stop proficiency percentages support high achievement within Bloomfield Hills Schools for all grades and subjects. The eleventh grade science and social studies proficiency results showed significant growth in 2017, something to really be celebrated. They have worked very hard. For the SAT as part of the MME, Bloomfield Hills Schools ranked second for English Language Arts, and in the top five for math as compared to the county districts, which we know we have impressive county districts. So it's nice to be compared with them and nice to be at the top. So now we're going to look at examining student groups. So on the next several slides, what you're going to see are charts to examine data based on student groups. Data continues to be analyzed to allow a focus on supporting students within these groups. Overall, for student groups, or, I'm sorry, what I'm going to show you, overall, for student groups combined by subject, and then a breakdown of student groups by grade, county and state comparisons, and then three-year trend data for both English Language Arts and math. So when looking at this data, it's, the way that it's illustrated up here is kind of unique, because basically, what you're seeing is every student is being represented nine different times, depending on what you're looking at. So you have to look at the separation. So the very far left, that's all of the students. And where we are in English Language Arts for grades three through eight, which is the grades that are tested. And then it goes into different student groups. So every single student that's in grades three through eight that took the M-stop is going to be in one of those columns represented. So again, every student is basically represented nine different times. So for spring 2017, all Bloomfield Hills student groups are higher than the county in Language Arts, except for English Language Learners, which is very close. Make sure that, you know, that Bloomfield is the blue and the county is the red. Any questions about the categories?
Do we have more of an influx in our yellow? Because they're a little bit lower than that.
Right, so it's also, I think it's our, one of our smallest subgroups, too. So that makes it a little bit challenging.
Yeah.
Do we have a slide that would compare this data for the year before?
Are all these groups statistically relevant? I know sometimes we don't show, or the state doesn't show data if it's below a certain threshold.
All of these groups can be shown. They are, you're talking about the number of students that has to be, yes. Yes, they all are. Because, because I have it with grades three through eight. Otherwise, no. Okay, so this next slide, it basically would answer the question, what is the trend for Bloomfield Hills Schools for the various student groups for English Language Arts? And we have the three-year trend data. So the blue is spring 2015, the red is spring 2016, and the green is spring 2017. It was hard to put the percentages up top. It kind of got a little bit squished with having so much data there. So they're underneath in a chart. Overall, the percent proficiency is fairly consistent. However, we did not show increases in all of our student groups. And it's important to keep in mind that the statewide proficiency levels decreased at all grades except for fifth grade. So that kind of comes into play. So we have to really make sure that we consider that as we're looking at the data. It's important to keep in mind that the assessments, although they cover the Common Core, they do change every year. The state does change them. And so it is important to look at the trends that we see at the state level. That would be all of our students. So this next slide would answer the question, how do various student groups perform in math? And how do BHS student groups compare to Oakland County student groups in math? Actually, yes. So if you, if you look here, I have Bloomfield Hills compared to Oakland County. And you can see that all BHS student groups are higher than the county. Again, Bloomfield is the blue, and Oakland County is the red.
Getting, I guess, to Jason's point, on a smaller scale, but the red is lifted by our scores, right?
Correct. Correct. Good. So again, we have three years of data for the M-stop data for math here. So we're looking at trend data, and the blue is spring 2015, the red is spring 2016, and the green is spring 2017. Overall, the percent proficiency, again, is fairly consistent. The economically disadvantaged, the English Language Learners, and African-American student groups have shown gains each year in mathematics percent proficiency based on the M-stop with those three-year trends.
The first graph like this was English?
Yes. First one was ELA, this one is mathematics.
In English, it went up second year, and then down, right? And then down.
Right. It did, it went, it did, for the most part, that it took that trend. But again, keep in mind that overall in the state, it also went down. And we can see that also in mathematics. If we look at the very far left, where we see all students represented, we can see that upward trend, which, with all students, it also, that Core One instruction was helpful for the student groups as well. So here we have the spring 2017 M-stop results by student groups for science. Recall that science is only administered in grades four and seven, or at least in 2017, in grades four and seven. Blue is Bloomfield, and red is the county. All Bloomfield Hills student groups are higher in science except for the economically disadvantaged. And again, that's, that's a small set of students that's being represented here, and we're dealing with low numbers.
Are the numbers in the legend the sample size?
Correct. Yep, at the bottom. And then on this next slide, here we have the spring 2017 M-stop results by student groups for social studies. Recall that social studies was administered in grades five and eight. Blue is Bloomfield, and red is the county. All BHS student groups are higher in social studies.
For, you know, for the, for ELL? I mean, is the, the test is all administered in English?
Yes.
Okay.
Some of the students do have accommodations, though, that are, that support their language.
Okay.
ELL is synonymous with ESL?
Yes. That's actually my last slide, so although this is the end of the M-stop data for tonight, you know, we continue to look at various data and assessments throughout the year. We are very, we've been very busy as a district, looking at Fuentes and Pennell data, and NWA data, and Writing Pathways data, and our daily data that comes from interactions with our students. So we, it's something that we are constantly looking at, and making sure that assessment plays a role within content and instruction to improve our students' learning every day.
Any other questions from the board?
I just want to thank you, Wendy, you've done such a remarkable job since coming here to our district. Not only in, you know, looking at this data so that you can understand it, but in facilitating conversations around data so that we can all learn the nuances, and that our teaching staff and our support staff and everybody, you know, our administrators, all can gain literacy around using data. And I think this is what Todd and you had been speaking about at the beginning of your presentation. It's a real culture shift. It's a real culture change. It reminds me a little bit of what's going on in baseball right now. You know, there are some various places that teams are at in terms of their use of analytics, you know, in terms of looking at information and feedback that helps them improve. And the teams, you know, I don't know anything about baseball enough to be dangerous, other than I watch it and enjoy it. But, you know, from what I understand, you know, the teams really gain an edge in understanding themselves, and understanding how to play to their strengths, and how to, you know, shore up their weaknesses, because they have a lot of good, rich information, and they look at it regularly, and they learn the whole... and they look at it regularly, they learn the whole facility around that. And so, um, just to general, generalize and summarize, you know, the shift and the trajectory that we're on as a district is, and I want to be really clear about this, especially for anybody watching at home, you know, might think that this is, that somehow our, our attention is now turned toward metrics as the be-all and end-all, especially these end-of, these summative, we call them metrics, that come at the end of a year. Uh, these are good for understanding our system in general. And they reflect how well we do day-to-day, at least to some measure, right? To some point, that is the intent. So, um, it isn't that we are now, uh, becoming focused on, uh, teaching to a test. What we're becoming focused on is precision in our teaching and our, and our instructional strategies and making sure that we're working as smart as we can work. And we are paying attention to our students as individuals as much as we can. So we understand them with depth. We can't do that without our analytics department. Do, do you see what I mean? I mean, the baseball analogy, like the Tigers, I read in the paper, hired like eight people, right? To do this work.
Yeah, they didn't do any analytics last year.
Yeah.
Money, it's like Moneyball.
Like Moneyball, yeah. But, but my point being that, that it requires an investment and an infrastructure to be built when you, when you make a decision, that you're going to become a, a, you're going to have a, an information-rich culture. You're going to really hold the mirror up to yourself. And we'll teach a lot of people how to do that in really simple and productive, real-time responsive ways that can change your teaching right now before a problem or an issue escalates in a classroom. And this is what Wendy's done and done outstandingly well.
Thank you.
And, um, what you see here is the tip of the iceberg, I assure you. All the systems that she runs, all the workshops that she runs, the hands-on training that she provides, all the understanding and the conversation she facilitates along with the rest of the Learning Services team is really exciting stuff. And I want to thank you, Wendy, Todd, Christine, um, you know, everyone on the Learning Services team for leading us so well in this direction. Thank you.
Thank you.
Wendy, um, the student group data that we were looking at is three through eight. Is that same kind of information available for the MME?
Uh, I should be able to get it.
I just want to point out, you know, we, just for general context, this is the data that is commonly referred to when people talk about the achievement gap. You know, when we look at the scores and the concerns that it's a, just to point out that we need to be continuing to look at the needs of our economically disadvantaged students, our students with IEPs, our English language learners, our African-American students, that there's subgroups that we need to continue to find ways of giving additional supports to, to help them be more successful according to that particular measure.
Right.
Yeah, the other thing, I agree. Uh, the other thing I'm excited about is, uh, you know, Todd, when he was making his open remarks, you know, mentioned that these are, you know, la, this is lagging information, these are lagging indicators. But all the effort that's being done right now to help us have some leading indicators so we can kind of understand, get an early warning system, if you will, this is not moving in the right direction. That's, that's really going to be exciting. I mean, we can glean a lot of useful information from this, don't get me wrong, but those leading indicators, um, that you guys are working on, I think are going to be so exciting. That will allow us to be much more precise in terms of what we do to help optimize outcomes for our learners. I think that's, it's really amazing. It's great that we have the resources available to do that kind of stuff. So we're excited to hear what you guys come up with.
Cynthia, I don't want to steal Ed's thunder, but, uh, when we had our, uh, BIC Board Instruction Committee meeting, uh, Todd spent a significant amount of time, we spent must have an hour, hour and a half, talking about, uh, the focus on literacy and a lot of the issues that we're, uh, doing within the, the classroom to try to, uh, address some of those achievement issues you were just talking about.
Other comments on the board?
Yes, I just wanted to mention that we had our DARE meeting. And, uh, over the last couple of years, there was like such a push, data, 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 right? And I think we've met, we've, you know, through Wendy's, uh, brilliant, um, leadership, we've kind of reached that threshold. It's only one data point, but actually the, the, um, discussion at DARE was actually, why are we spending so much time on this data? You know? It's not, it's completely, that's true. And, right? And so, uh, I, there's, there is that, I call it sometimes a transparency threshold. You know, I think that we've broken through the transparency threshold now and people are confident we're sharing the data. And now they want to say, and, and, uh, now what? Yeah, and so I think that they're right there with us and I thought that was pretty interesting.
Thank you for sharing.
So don't, don't close your laptop and just say, our work here is done.
Yeah.
But I think it was interesting at the DARE conversation, we have to be reminded regularly that, um, sometimes our community members don't recognize, um, our teachers don't have the opportunity to see what the test questions are on M-step from you and to be able to, you know, directly a, address what might be, you know, what might be a problem area for students. They don't get to see that to be able to address it in a more constructive manner. And I think, um, sometimes our, our, our community doesn't rec, understand that, that piece of it, that it's just a, it's a picture of what, of, of, of how our, how kids across the state, um, measure to a set of questions that somebody somewhere has created.
But one of the things that Wendy has been bringing to us over the last year that she's been here is the illuminate data, which is more, a lot more robust. One of the, just one of the data points is the, the M-step information. There are a lot of other assessment pieces in there that hopefully will, and where we do have visibility of the, the questions and do know more. I mean, this is a statewide process on the M-step, but we do have internal metrics that we look at very carefully to correlate it to, to the.
County has really helped us with, uh, having more access to that.
Yes.
For the community out there watching, will this or some, some semblance of this be on our website? This presentation?
And we'll cover that in our next presentation in a minute.
All right. Aliou.
Yeah, there you go.
Set them up.
Great segue.
Okay, any other questions or comments on the board? Thank you so much, Wendy.
Thank you, Wendy.
And so that was a great segue. Uh, we're going to, our next, uh, report is on the strategic plan, key performance indicators.
Right.
Rob, you going to make a few remarks here?
I'm going to make a few remarks. I'm not going to numb your brain with more data, but I am going to talk at a high level about some data. What I'd like to, to do is, um, give you a little context around what, what I'm going to show you today. I'm very excited about what I'm going to show you tonight, despite the fact that we are not going to give you a bunch of more data that we're going to dig into because I think we've absorbed a lot tonight. I'm going to point you to a resource we've put on our website that we've been building toward for a long time, uh, that we are finally launching. It's up on the website now. It isn't perfect, but we decided to launch it, um, because we didn't want the good to be the enemy of the best. And we will continue to improve it day by day, week by week. So it is a work in progress. But what this is, is an attempt to take our strategic work and to, you've seen that we've tried to make our work plan around our, our strategic plan, the things that we're focusing on, the things that Todd's been talking about, we've all been talking about focusing on consistent leaderships, uh, uh, infrastructure for teacher leadership, you know, a literacy focus, real sharp, and in a math focus, real sharp. And the action steps we're taking and how that's going to hopefully close some of our gaps in between student groups that we talk about. And we have several other strategic goals. And they're listed on just a few pages that we've had up on our website for a long time that you've seen. So it starts with our mission, our vision, you know, all those things. And then our three big goals, one around learning, one around communication, relationship with the community, and one around resource allocation. And all those have just a few objectives. We're trying to stay very focused. That is always a challenge for any organization. The good organizations stay really focused, right? To get, you know, to move the needle on a couple areas because it's just tempting to take on everything. So we've tried to have this document reflect that. And we've listed it so that it's pretty easy to understand. And on the, on the right-hand side of this document, I'm going to show you again, and you've seen it before, are key performance indicators, KPIs, high-level measures that we can track so we can see trends, much like the M-step trends you saw. So we can say to you and our community and ourselves, okay, here's the work we set out to do and we said, we're going to do this work this year. Strategically, this was important work. How do we know that we're making progress? How do we, how do we have, how can we at a high level get a thumbnail, get some feedback that gives us a bit of a, an indicator about how well we're doing? Are we performing? And these, we tried really hard to make not input indicators, but output indicators. Not things we're doing to get better, but things that should show some movement of the needle, some outcome. Secondly, these are mostly lagging indicators, as we, as Todd talked about, that you're going to see in there. And that's the point of a KPI. It really is designed to be a lagging out indicator. So these aren't, um, we, we did some homework, we did some research on, I know those of you who work in other industries, this is probably like bread and butter to you all. But in education, this is not. In fact, you'll, you'll see a lot of dashboards at school district level, but you won't see a lot of, what we've tried to format is transparency and responsibility and accountability in our work, in the things we said we were going to do. And to try to create a document that reflects that. So what we're going to have is a dashboard and this strategic plan work document with li, it has links to it. Just so when you see the work, you want to know what the KPI is for that work, you click on it and you see it. And as we, some of these measures, we've had for a while. Some of these measures are new measures based on like our surveys that are, that have changed. Just like when they changed the M-step test, you kind of have to start over. Your, your trend data is no longer any good. So we've got a variety of data points like that in here. And so what I'm going to do today is simply, I'm here to say, I'm very proud and pleased of our team that they put this together, that we have it. We've been, we've been building toward this as an idea for a year or two at least. And now we have it and it's easy to access on the website. We may move it around on the website at some point, we may make it look a little different, we may tweak it. But I want you, everybody to know where it is. Because you'll be able, like Jason asked the question, where will we find some of these data? You'll find this presentation here. There will be other data points you'll find. And so you, if you find this document, you can find the KPIs all in one-stop shopping. Really easy, okay? So, here we go. Um, Vicky's going to help me, this is kind of like hands-free remote. So, uh, thank you, Vicky, for helping me out here. So if you go to our website and, as you know, you, you find the tab About Us. On bloomfield.org, find the tab About Us. When you go down there, you hit Board of Education. Board of Education, on the left-hand side, you hit Strategic Plan. There is a thumbnail of our strategic plan. And on the right-hand side, under Resources, you see all the resources that we've had on our strategic plan for years. Oh, it's here, it's just not up there. Yeah, thanks, Sheri. Sheri was trying to alert me that it wasn't up here on the screen in the auditorium, but I think it's going at home. We can see it on our monitors, right? Okay. So you click on Strategic Plan, uh, two thousand seventeen, eighteen. This is our work plan for our strategic plan. So this is all that detail that, you know, when people want to look at your strategic plan, they just want the thumbnail, which you just saw before, right? You want to dig deeper? Here's our work plan, our administrative work plan for what we're working on year by year by year. And there are three goal areas. So if you look at that first goal area, it has specific hyperlinks for each of these things. So objective one, right, we've been talking about a literacy focus, right? Relentless focus on literacy, we want to be, really be, shore that up and, and, and put renewed focus on, on the good work we're already doing and sharpen ourselves there. So you can look at, if you click to view the data dashboard, I'm going to go ahead and, and ask Vicky, would you click on that? This takes you to a data dashboard that is almost, it's, it's getting near completion. So we will have this data dashboard available to, you know, independent of this KPI product, this KPI document. But already on the homepage, we've loaded the answers to those KPIs, right? So you, you'll be able to see our aggregate NWEA data in math, reading, and language. That covers goal one, uh, objective one. You'll have our DRA data. That is that reading assessment that is now the Fanta's and Pennell. When we've completed the Fanta's and Pennell in about a month or two, we will load that instead. So, um, this is, it takes you right to a lot of those, um, measures that we talked about. If you, I'm not going to go each one, but let's, while we're here, if you, the, you don't have to click it, Vicky, but the one that says SAT M-step three, that, that is the presentation you just saw? You'll get that, okay? We split it out for objective one and two. Objective one is about literacy, objective two is about math, but the stuff is all the same. We've, we've put a date when you'll have the Fanta's and Pennell available. But as it is, you've got the NWEA and the Writing Pathways is still coming in as well. We don't have that all in yet this year, but when that comes in, we'll load that in. So if you go down to, um, now, the obje, objective three is probably the area where we've got most work to do. Because, again, we could give you all kinds of data about leading indicators, how many people we've trained. We probably will put that on there for now because we have that data. We, again, trying to focus on outcomes, lagging indicators, right? We have a couple in there and we need to still do a little more work, pulling some pieces out for our Laco cul, our, our Laco culture and survey and some of our, um, student discipline data. That, that will be coming in November. We've got to sharpen that up before it's ready to go out. But I do want to click on, if, if, um, Vicky, if you would, the discriminatory incident data. This is something we, we shared with DARE, as you recall, um, and everyone will have access to this. We, as part of the DARE work, committed to having a process for, um, recording when someone makes a, a complaint that they've been discriminated against in our school system, that we take that seriously and whether even regardless of the results of the investigation that we document that it happened. And, and we document what we did about it. So if you go through this whole, this whole document, you'll see a ton of data on last year's, uh, everything we did last year. What hap, you know, how many victims were they? What was their gender? What was their ethnicity? At what levels were they? So, you know, I'm not going to go through all that now, but it's, it's very, uh, good, complete snapshot level data. So Vicky, if you go back to the main, I know this is, there you go, thank you. You're doing great, thanks, thanks, Vicky. We have co-curricular stuff in there because it, you know, it's to show engagement. I wouldn't click on it, Vicky, at this point because it just shows how many clubs we run, how many students are in them. Um, I think that's going to eventually be replaced with some survey data that we need to create and we can give in the spring. Objective four is about, uh, developing teacher leadership. What we plan to use, these ones, these, these data points are going to be put into a spring that we had planned, the same or similar, um, set, um, culture and climate survey, that we, with our teachers specifically about how they're feeling about their support and their ability to execute objective four. And we just haven't, we have to create that and do it this, uh, spring. The four Cs, performance assessments, are something we're working on with Ed Leader Twenty-One, which is another group of districts, where we're going to be able to begin to assess. At our middle school level, we're already beginning to, in that pilot and on our way to administering performance tasks with authentic assessments that will help us measure creativity, communication, collaboration, uh, and critical thinking, uh, at least some of those things, and to be able to benchmark against other districts, other districts in the pilot. Number five is, um, it, it kind of, uh, if you look at the left, and I wouldn't click on it, but it's a, it's an explanation of what, how we measure, uh, our capacity and sustainability supporting the one world. Okay? That's our, how we are integrating technology, how teachers are feeling about their ability to actually execute that work. And on the right-hand side, you have, um, some metrics. If you want to just go ahead and click on that one, please, Vicky. David Shelkin's put together some metrics here, um, that if you keep going down, these, this is sort of the legend, right? But if you go down, you see some dashboard indicators, um, some of those key, key performance indicators for that. And we, we won't go into it in depth, but they're there for you. And they're pretty easy to understand if you just take a minute and look at it. So Vicky, if you'd go back, um, please, a little more ground to cover. Now, the next section is goal two. This is about our constructive partnerships and relationships. This is about our constructive partnerships and relationships that strengthen our entire community. These last two goals, Two and Three, are one document. You click at the top, link to KPI document is formatted differently than all those individual links. Because Goal One, you're going to be swapping out and adding two more pieces, so you don't want to have to change the whole document every time. We're pretty much in good shape with Two and Three, there isn't as much change that's going to occur throughout the year, right? So, they're, they're there. So, if you click, please, on this Goal Two, for the three objectives that are, that are there, you have a complete presentation, if you just scroll down a little bit, please, Vicky. Objective One, these are the KPIs we've talked about, the one in the box is the key one that we look at, the others are just a little more information. And you see what the goal is and what the KPI is for it. This is a rather complete and lengthy one.
Yeah.
Because we have very rich data from our survey, that our Communications Department created and launched. And you've heard and seen a lot of this, these data at the last board meeting, when a presentation was given on this. But they're reformatted here, and just the key pieces that we're tracking on our strategic plan are pulled out and put there. Okay, thanks, Vicky. If you just go maybe to Goal Three, and then we will, I'd like you, if you, this is the one about maximizing our community's investment. So, you can see the key performance indicators listed, and then if you hit the KPI document, you find them. You can see our history, objectives are relisted there under Goal Three. If you go down, you see our fund balances, a percentage of expenditures over the years, and you'll see some more data about our mileage rate history. You'll see some more data about our mileage rate comparison to other Oakland County districts, and our average fleet, bus fleet life, our sinking fund projects overview, that is coming soon. We have a little more polishing up to do on that. So, that's really it. I just wanted you to know how to find it, I wanted you to know what it's there, that it's there, I wanted you to have an idea of what's there, I wanted you to be able to refer our community members to it, and I wanted you to understand that I, I think this is a rather unique wrinkle to the dashboard. I think it's a, it's a, it's kind of a neat little innovation that our teams put together, and I have to give a specific shout-out to Tina Kostick and Todd Bidlack, Christine DiPallato, Wendy Osterman, Shira Good, David Shelken, Brian Goby, and Pam Schomer, for all the specific work that they, they were the leads on this. And Leanne Summers, my executive assistant, did a tremendous job helping us organize this and keep everything, did quality control on the document itself. I'm very, I'm very thankful to everybody for doing this. This is a lot of important work.
I think we want to thank you all for, for putting this together. It's a wonderful message to be able to share with our community about how we want to be accountable to our community and, and be able to show what's going on with our, in our school district. Comments, questions from the board? Howard?
Rob? In parallel with us coming up with this very robust dashboard, the state, MDE and the State Board of Education are working on what they're calling a Transparency Dashboard. That's still a work in process, it's the data output for ESSA, the Every Student Succeeds Act, and accountability for the entire state. How does our dashboard here link or not link with what they're going to be showing for our district?
It's a really good question. In fact, I looked at an email today that gave me some more indications of what this might look like. I think what, there really won't be any direct connection. I, I think what we're going to need, what this will do is it'll set us up to have processes in place to regularly gather any data that they may want for their dashboard. Perhaps a lot of this will just already be formatted and ready to fit, which would be a nice, you know, worksaver. It's more likely that there'll be a handful of things that they ask for that we haven't captured, that we'll just have to add. So, I think what we would do at that point would be, we would leave these KPIs on our strategic plan, because that's a very specific thing, right? That's specific to the work that the board and the administration worked together with the community to say, these are the things we want to work on, that won't change, but what might change is the dashboard that you saw, that was one element of this. And depending on if that satisfies the needs, you know, of what the state's asking for, then great, we were all set.
I think the state's going to be doing it kind of on their own, using data out of SEPI, I believe.
They'll probably pull a lot of that out of SEPI, out of the student information database and stuff, so.
Because the one thing we don't want to have is correlation problems, where they have one set of data, and the way they calculate it, and we calculate it slightly differently.
It could happen.
Therefore, there's going to be confusion.
The good thing, I think, is, you're right, that could happen, but I'm, I'm getting the sense that they're going to keep it fairly straightforward and not complicated.
As long as it's on your radar.
Yeah, no, I think it's neat, and I'm not, you know, you know how it is, you don't want to hold your breath, because they, they change their systems a lot, and at some point you just say, all right, we'll do it on our own, and then you'll learn enough that when you have to adapt to theirs a little bit, you can make a decision. You want to just go to theirs if it's good, or you want to have both, or do you have to calibrate between and make an explanation? Yeah, it's a good question.
Any other comments or questions from board members?
At what point, if ever, does the state reach into a school district like ours and say, let's see what you've done, since we're, seems like we're kind of leaders in this space?
Yeah, actually, they do. Michigan Department of Education really is, I heard a story, you just reminded me of a story somebody told me in the last day or two about, Todd, you told me a little bit a while ago about some situation that he was aware of, that the state happened to be, you know, in a district looking at some things, and, and happened upon something really special, really cool, that they were doing, and said, wow, that's great, we're, can we share that? We're going to share this. And, and so, you know, when they find, and State Superintendent Brian Wiston has been remarkable in coming out to districts and doing a lot of field visits and audits, and not audits, but field visits, just to, just to hear and listen, and, and he takes those ideas, and you can see evidence of what he's seeing built into the state's strategic plan for learning, and their 10-in-10 goals. You see a lot of the nuggets in there. So, I think they do a pretty good job of trying to do that and share that.
Rob has been put on a number of panels and a number of task forces over the last few years.
Yeah, they've been pretty open to input. You know, there's always, you know, a lot of filtering, and, you know, and the product doesn't always reflect what we would all like, but I think they do a pretty nice job of trying to get input from us. In fact, I, I was on a visit to another school district in the area, that district was showcasing some of their unique programs. It was very impressive, and I, I was surprised to see one of the state school board members there, and to see, I think, someone from Michigan Department of Education there, and a number of others who were influential in state policy and, you know, learning too. And then we had a little debrief discussion at the end, and they were, they were good participants and good listeners. All you can ask for, I think that was, I think, yeah, if they see this and they go, oh, that's pretty cool. And, you know, I really don't know, we might be leaders in this place. I think we're probably not leaders in the dashboard area. If you go in a lot of school districts, some of them have really good dashboards, some of them have a lot of the data that comes out of the state database, or they, or a lot of the charts they've created, like Wendy does, and they just sort of have a, it isn't always real complicated, it's just a straight list of how you did on your state tests. But I don't really think I've seen a lot do it like we've done it with, to connect it to our strategic goals, and to have it a little, be a little fuller picture. So, yeah, I'm, I'm pretty, I'm pretty excited about that, and there may be others that are doing it, but I haven't seen it.
Jason, I would say that I think with Brian Wiston and the state board, they really are doing these kind of things. I would only advise that our state legislature take a page out of that book. I don't know whether they do as much benchmarking and analysis as they might need to.
So, last thing I'll just mention is that, you know, this will evolve, right? So, we're going to, you know, and the trick will be trying to not have too many things that becomes, but as we were talking, we thought at some point, some of this you may want to do some narrative around too, you know, but just you have to be careful that it doesn't become all bogged down and too hard for people to read through and understand. So, we may find a better metric and substitute it, or an older metric that didn't work as well. So, be, please offer input if you have ideas for things that we, that didn't work so well, or that work that you really like, and if, or if you get that from community members. And please know that we'll try to keep making it better, you know? But I think it's, I think it's a good start, it's a really good start.
So, I would think that as we have interactions with PTOC, with other constituent community groups as we're talking, you know, I think our, our challenge should be to find ways of, of regularly referring people to go and, and check out what's, what's, what this information is accessible, just as when we first adopted our core values, and we tried, we first adopted some other major guiding pieces, guiding principles, you know, we tried to weave them into our regular conversation across the district. I think this is a point of pride that is something that we ought to sort of find ways to try to mention regularly as we refer people, if you want this information, you should go to. So, I think it's, it's a tool that will need to help, need help to continually be reminded that we need to make, take advantage of what's really all available here.
I think a, a good point is that we're members of the Oakland County School Board Association, and Rob is a member of the Oakland County Superintendent's Organization, and that might be a nice session to compare and contrast different dashboards that we all have, and as ours matures, be able to show ours, and we might be able to learn something from other districts.
Anything else? Thank you very much, that's a pretty exciting new stuff.
Thanks, Vicky.
Thank you, Vicky. And speaking of Vicky, as we're going into general discussion here, I do want to say thank you to Vicky Chandler and Joelle Hamilton, who are our crew this, this evening. I neglected to recognize our crew last week, and I was afraid I'd forget it again before we got to the end of the meeting, so we appreciate all that they do to help to bring our board meetings to our community. I guess I'd like to hear the report from our FFLA committee.
Yeah, so, there was just a couple of things that we talked about. One, Brian Goby and Tina gave a presentation on how we're being energy efficient throughout the district in order to save costs. And then the second thing, which we voted on in consent, was the demolition of 4175 Andover, which goes into Brian Goby's long-term strategic plan on some of the needs of the district. And that was it for FFLA.
So, just for those folks who've been in the community a long time, 4175 Andover Road is our old administration building. It's had a lot of different usage since the administration moved out, but it's been a building that's had needs for, a lot, a lot of physical needs for a very, very long time. And I think at this point, being able to use it for potential student parking is a good future plan for that area. And so, bon voyage to this old building. Spend many, many hours over there. Mr. Ford was unable to be at our BIC meeting this week, so I led our group with Jackie and Howard, and we were, had a great conversation with Todd and Rob and Christine DiPallato. And a lot of the conversation was about some of the parts, some of the pieces that we were just hearing about from the strategic plan and the, our, our improvement plan, particularly on the Learning Services Teams areas, and improving literacy and mathematics and our teacher leaders. So, that was really the bulk of our conversation, and that was a very robust conversation. I specific, I really enjoyed the conversation about using our teacher leaders in, in new ways that is launching this year, and I was excited to hear how group teachers' role is being developed, redeveloped, and some great new folks who are helping in, in leading that area. We had, there was a fair amount of conversation, continuing conversation, on how we're going to work towards improving our, our literacy for, for all of our students. And then there was, mentioned some specific things that are going to be going on, how our seventh grade students are all going to be going to the Detroit Science Center to visit the Thousand and One Inventions exhibit that is going on there, and I told my husband, I need to get down there to see it as well.
I was there last night.
Yeah?
Yeah.
It sounds like it's fabulous.
It was Women in STEM Night, yes.
It ought to be fabulous. Yeah. I think those are the main things that we covered. Oh, the other thing though is, we've sort of had a conversation, a beginning conversation about wonderings. Wonderings about connections between cognitive science, science of belonging, global competencies, equity in instruction, and Todd gave us some articles for a little homework to sort of help spur our consideration of some of those topics, which I think he was going to share with the rest of the board as well, on what we know about belonging from scientific research, how to be a global thinker, finding our way into each other's worlds, on cultural perspective taking. So, I haven't had a chance to read them yet, but that's my homework, and I'm looking forward to, and I think that, appreciate the opportunity to help to give us some broader context on those conversations, and that kind of, I think they're exciting.
I spent them, at lunchtime today, I read all those articles. I just wanted to say how impressed we all were with all the work that Todd and the LST is doing. The instructional specialists, the teacher leaders, the in-depth analysis on literacy, it is just very, very impressive. So, thank you.
Anything else from, on BIC? Just pointing out for general appreciation, our Oakland County School Boards Association meeting next week, we're going to be asking, there'll be a topic about how board members can be involved in the whole conversation about Michigan School Finance Reform. And there will be, just sort of, we'll be asking under the new bylaws, that we will be probably now presenting now, not till January, but it will ask, we'll, we'll be coming to each individual board across the county to get approval of our legislative goals for our association. And I just thought I'd just review a thumb sketch on those for the county, we, our legislative committee. We had to protect school aid funding, evidence-based decision-making, accountability and transparency, and local control, and we expect our Michigan legislators to protect, to do work on all of those things, accountability and transparency, to maintain local control. So, you'll be getting the detail on all of those for a future meeting, but I hope you'll take a chance to read through those when we bring them, bring them back to you.
Just listening, you said evidence-based decision-making, well, what do we just hear at BIC and through Wendy? And transparency, well, what do we just hear in terms of the KPIs?
But we're asking our legislature to work on, these are the things that we are asking our legislature to make decisions in those, under those areas that are, we know what we're supposed to, we know what we're supposed, what we think is the most important thing to do, we want them to do those things too. We want them to support, those are the things that we want them to support as well. That's what it's all about. Okay, with that, do we have anybody who wants to make a public comment this evening? No public comment. All right, then we'll move right on, on to board business. And our first item is the approval of the Uniform Stood of Code of Student Contact.
Good evening. Hi, Chris. At our last board meeting, I gave you a PowerPoint on this item, and I haven't received, since that time, I haven't received any questions or concerns or recommendations from any board members to change it. I took a little license myself, and I did change some of the formatting, and I added a section on restorative practices, I just made it more in a paragraph instead of a couple of sentences. But other than that, it's the same, and if you approve tonight, I will be sending this out to all the buildings with an explanation.
Any questions for Chris? We have a motion? We have a motion.
I move that the board approve the revisions to Uniform Code of Student Conduct Policy 5301 as presented by Christine Barnett.
Report.
Report from Jason. Any questions or comments? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next item is the request to accept the comprehensive annual financial report from Tina. Thank you.
Good evening. So, you heard the presentation, and it is a formality for the board to please accept the audit report for last fiscal year ended.
Make the motion to request to accept the comprehensive, comprehensive annual financial report.
Second?
Second from Howard. Any questions or comments? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Unanimously happily supported.
Thank you. So, tomorrow, we will place that on our website within our transparency web pages.
Good job. Thank you very much. We are adjourned until Monday, November 13th. Just remember that our board member is on a Monday this time. Very good. Thank you. Happy Halloween.
Yeah.[1771.38]